With that, I want to introduce Commander Curry. I think he needs no introduction, but I'm giving him one anyways. He's really hit the ground running. It's been phenomenal working with you before you took command and now after. We're just getting started, so, sir, please give us an overview.
Okay, this is a test. I think I got the button there. All right, it's lit up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and for all of you, just giving me the opportunity to spend some time with you today, I really appreciate it. We started this morning pretty early at the brick, and there was good coffee there, so always good. You're going to hear some great information from the consultants. These guys have a diverse background, and all of you are sort of aware of that. I get the opportunity to actually lead 5,000 strong. That's across the globe, so not just here on Grand Forks Air Force Base, but also out in California at Beale Air Force Base, Signella in Italy, and then at Anderson Air Force Base at Guam, which they just got back from being forward deployed to Japan. So when you think about that, sometimes I think people in Grand Forks kind of forget that piece of, you are global. Grand Forks has taken themselves across the globe, which is pretty fantastic. I like to focus on our three priorities. They haven't changed significantly from the wing commander prior to me or the ones probably prior to him, because they're important, and you guys actually helped us construct those. The first is our airmen, the second is the mission, and the third is the future. Where are we going in the future? From an airmen standpoint, we've partnered with the city and the county and really the entire state. We have great leadership, you talked about it, man, from the senators that we have to our governor, right down to our mayor and the county and the great partnerships that we have locally, to make our airmen feel valued, welcomed, and they know their work is purposeful from that standpoint. In terms of the mission, there's been some changes, and there's goodness in that overall. We're downsizing, I would say, the Global Hawk fleet. You guys got to see the Block 20s go over to Grand Skies, so they'll get to do some great work just in a different realm. Block 30's future, we'll find out what that is here from Congress shortly, and then Block 40, the aircraft will remain here for the next six years is what the department is saying from that standpoint. No change in the mission, they're providing great relevant capability to the warfighters today. And then, in terms of the future, we have Space Development Agency, which you've heard a little bit about, that opportunity, and then all of the work that's going on on Grand Sky. We get to leverage that on our base side of the house as well, and so we're going to need the right people in the community for the future. We're going to need to maintain those relationships with the university that we have, and we're really excited about the future of Grand Forks Air Force Base. So thanks for letting me kind of give an intro and kind of a little bit of background on where we are right now, and I'm open to any questions we have, but I am not the highlight. These guys are going to be the highlight today, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions off the top for Colonel Curry?
All right, we'll hand it over then to the, is it General Rool or General Finley? Who's got the, there we go, the red mics there.
I'm starting.
You're batting leadoff, all right.
Yeah, okay, good. It's working. Beef, you're always the show, man. You guys should feel very fortunate, I'm going to say that right off the top. We've got a lot of collective experience in the Air Force, and you guys have been blessed with an absolutely fantastic wing commander here. That is easy to see that he's got the leadership talents that are going to take this base to the next level, so he's fabulous. But what we're here to do today, and we enjoy this particular visit every year, and once a year we come in here to brief the joint city council and the commission, and we enjoy giving this update, because even more so this year because there's a lot of good things that happened despite the pandemic. And we're mainly going to talk about the future, but what I wanted to do at the outset here is to kind of go over some of the good things that have happened. You're going to be familiar with most of these, and there's a lot of things that spring out of these particular good things that happened that we're going to talk about as we continue through tonight to brief this. Please, if you've got questions, if you've got comments, stop us and interrupt us, don't wait till the end. We'll certainly entertain questions at the end, too, but if something piques your interest right then and there, just go ahead and ask the question, ask, make the comment, and we'll do our best to answer it. So if you want to go to the next slide.
We purposely only have five content slides, and those of you that have sat through this same annual pitch before, we've sometimes had more slides. So seriously, if you have a question or there's an acronym or something on there, heck, if we can't answer it, I know Colonel Curry can, but let's try to have that atmosphere of just stick your hand up and we'll stop and we'll talk about it.
Yeah, we want it to be interactive, so if you want to go to the first slide. Like I said, we're going to go through a quick review of some of the highlights from 2021, and this all happened despite the pandemic. It all happened because we've got a great community here and a great Codel that supports the mission out at the base as well and does wonderful things to help the airmen. As you heard Wing Commander say, number one priority is taking care of those airmen and does a great job, but also to help the mission and to continue to look to the future. So the community assist, I know when I was the wing commander here, there's none better. And he's been a wing commander four times, I've been a wing commander three times, we've got a little experience to base that on, but I had the good fortune many, many moons ago being the wing commander out here. And the community rallies to the cause and does a great job here, and that's, some of that stuff up there is a credit to the community, it's also a credit to the Codel. And I'd like to think that we've helped along the way with a lot of these things through the years. Raising the awareness of Grand Forks means getting some of the senior leaders of the Air Force up here. Let's face it, Grand Forks was an Air Mobility Command base for a long time. I was in Air Mobility Command, there's a lot of air mobility folks that know where Grand Forks was. These two gentlemen were in Air Combat Command. Many of the Air Combat Command folks, fighter pilots, had never been up to Grand Forks. So there's obviously mobility folks and fighter pilots in the leadership of the Air Force, and in particular, those that haven't ever been up here, it's better to put your eyes on the target. So there's been some good accomplishments in regards to getting some of those senior leaders up here, the Chief of Staff, obviously, there, General Kelly, and many of the other folks that are running the Air Force today at the senior levels. Your work, the state's work on the licensure bill is excellent. Quality of life, again, is still important and becoming even more important in some aspects. SDA, we talked a little bit about that, that is a great accomplishment as well, enhancing the value of the base, bringing the base to somewhat of a new mission that's going to be additive to where the nation's going. We're going to talk a little bit about our visit. We only made one visit this year because of COVID, and that was to North Common and Space Com. We've got a separate slide where we'll go over some of the stuff that came out of that meeting that looks to the future. Big thing, announcement was made that the Block 20s are going away, and the Block 30s will probably follow. What to do with them? That's a big question that's on the slate that we need to deal with. The 20s are coming across the ramp, they're already there, we're going to have a ceremony tomorrow, and the DOD agency, the Test Resource Management Group is going to take control of those. That's good news, okay? Those are still going to be doing DOD business and flying out of Grand Sky. It's good news for the community, it's good news for Grand Forks. If they've got to go away, it's great they're staying here and they're being repurposed. We'd look for something, hope for something like that on the Block 30s as well, and you'll see in our slides upcoming in this next year, that's one thing we need to work on as a group, is to figure out if there's a way we can help the DOD use these Block 30s in a good way, repurpose them, and maybe, right here is a good place to fly them, I'd say, so maybe that could happen. The ecosystem continues to grow, Vantus is a big, big plus, more to follow on that, but that's an opening for the future and opportunity as well. I already talked about the TRMC, and then UND has really stepped up. We had a great meeting with UND earlier today with Dr. Armakostin and several of the deans and talked about all kinds of ways we may be able to help them as they work forward to do more cooperative work and research with DOD, so. And then the two biggies at the bottom, the ISR Crew Training Mission, the big announcement, as well as an unspecified ISR mission coming to the base. That cements the future. Now, we don't know what we don't know about some of the details there, and everybody would like to have those details, but I guess our caution to you all would be patient, that's going to come out over time, and the good news is the announcement was made, construction's going to start coming up, and with the construction comes new mission, comes a whole plethora of things that are possibilities. Once those things become clear, trust us to help you continue to grow and enhance the mission out at the base, so. Any questions or comments? Please interrupt along the way. Go ahead, Dana.
He's probably, you know, we didn't put this slide together, when putting this list together, I said, I hope someone doesn't think that we're taking credit for any of this. No, no, we have happily been on the team for the last seven or eight years, but, I mean, the state, the county, the city, the base leadership, his predecessors.
Just like we said at the outset, it's a great community support, great Codel support, we're just here to help.
There are a lot of people that deserve a lot of credit, and you guys do actually deserve a lot of credit.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, but it's been a whole team effort. You guys, I think, know this, but your Codel has become very influential in Washington, DC, and they've done a very good job of promoting Grand Forks Air Force Base.
Okay, in the summer, this last summer in June, we, four of us, and we limited the size to four, did a visit to Colorado Springs to these headquarters. We had been to these headquarters a couple of years ago, but, and it was with the community leaders, but the headquarters, it was a very small visit, we only sat in one meeting with a small number of staff members, and so they had some leadership change there. The commander of Northern Command changed out, Space Com had folks changing out, and so we decided, particularly with some of the things I want to talk about, that it was important for some representatives of the Grand Forks community to go, and that team was made up of General Deptula, General Finley, myself, and Brigadier General, retired Army Bowen, Greg Bowen, who joined us from the community. So the four of us went there, we came back, reported out to some members, but not everybody, but I'm going to go through the highlights here. If you need, if you'd like any more information on that trip, we have a report and happy to answer any of your questions on it. The first thing that's probably important is to, just, there's a lot of letters up there at the top. This base, Grand Forks Air Force Base principally was born in the early 1950s because of the Northern Air Defense Command or the defense of North America against the Soviet bombers. And so NORAD is still existence and is partnered with Northern Command, and at those headquarters, Northern Command, NORAD, and Space Command, it's not all Air Force, it's all the different services are combined together in that combatant headquarters. Space Command is not as different than the Space Force, it's not all guardians that are there, members of the Army and the Navy and the Air Force and guardians are all working together under Space Command. So these are joint combatant commands with the headquarters, they're right near each other in Colorado Springs, and when we, when it comes to employing force for our country, whether it be in space or air defense or domain awareness, when it comes to doing that, services don't do those things, it's the combatant commands that do. So that's the, I know it's a little bit of a distinction, but it's important to keep that in mind when you look at these topics, and what those combatant commands may do to try to influence what ends up happening here at Grand Forks, and I'll give you that example here in a second. So a lot of those, because those commands, those headquarters are made up of members of different services, sometimes different countries, a lot of them have never been, staff members have never been to Grand Forks, they maybe know where North Dakota is on the map, but they don't know exactly about the infrastructure, they don't know about the missions, and they certainly don't know about the community support for the airmen and the families up here. So our number one bullet on all these visits is to raise the awareness of, on whatever staff we're visiting, on not just Grand Forks Air Force Base, but also what's going on in the community support for the airmen and their families here. The next couple bullets there, the interest in the Arctic is something that's growing by every week, month, year, whether you believe in global warming or not, it really doesn't matter, the Russians and the Chinese and other nations have a significant interest in the Arctic, and so the commander specifically of Northern Command, General Van Hurk, and his predecessor, but a lot of General Van Hurk is what can Northern Command do to increase the domain awareness on what's going on at the Arctic? The location of your base, the fact that you have the type of airplanes you have here with the Global Hawk, the ability to fly missions up from here to the Arctic to increase that domain awareness, we talked a lot of that, about a lot of that with not only General Van Hurk, but also his staff. And there are other missions that you might expect, defensive, perhaps force projection missions, being as far north as we are. We used to have a lot of bases up here in the northern part of the country, we'd only have a few now, and you're one of them with the best infrastructure and the best capability, and that clearly got General Van Hurk's attention, as well as all the members of his staff that we visited. This third bullet about using a staging base for real world of training operations, you have a big runway, a lot of ramp space, there's some airspace, a lot of airspace around here that might be used, unmanned aircraft, manned aircraft, now you have space coming in, and Colonel Curry was, you know, is thinking about that right now as we speak, and in the future, how might this place serve as a location for some exercising? What that means to the community for some period of time, however long an exercise would last, there'd be an influx of people occupying hotels, eating at restaurants, you know, and coming up here, there'd be, you know, a lot of activity associated with those exercises as people are coming in. But it also serves, would serve to highlight the capability of the base called Grand Forks Air Force Base if and when Northern Command or any other command needed to use that base to launch combat missions from, in addition to the ones that they're already flying from there as well. This over-the-horizon radar demonstration, you've probably heard about that a lot, over-the-horizon radar technology has been around since the 1960s, it's been around for a long time in different parts of the world. It was never really thought of, very applicable here in the center part of North America, looking north because of some issues with radiation in the ionosphere, of how these HF signals bounce off of that. But now we have the technology to use that, to actually see the actual target out of the noise that we didn't have back in the 60s and 70s. So they did, I think, was it two years ago, there was a demonstration done at Camp Crafton, kind of a concept of, hey, could we, could this even work? And the demonstration was much more successful than anyone thought, and so now a larger demonstration is going to come in place here in North Dakota with a transmitter and a receiver and sites that are about 30 some odd miles.
Yeah, one in Thompson and one at Grand Sky.
Okay, thank you. And the Ops Center for that demonstration would likely be at Grand Sky. But if you look at the future, what are we, what are things we care about? In addition, when we look north, in addition to Arctic domain awareness, potential adversaries have really long-range stealthy, hard-to-see cruise missiles and other things that might be coming in that we'd want to know about, and this technology can help us with that long-range awareness of that. So there are a lot of interest at the headquarters there in Colorado Springs over this thing that's going to be happening over the next couple of years with the over-the-horizon radar demonstration, which may or may not lead to something even bigger of setting up a big facility here. The headquarters there was interested in the capacity of the base, perhaps, to serve as a continuity of operations or called a coop site, if something happens at headquarters and they want to, you know, go somewhere else to try to continue to do their mission, they were interested in things like secure facilities and communication capabilities and so forth. So we talked about that. We always highlight the superb infrastructure that's at this base. As Rusty said, you know, the three of us have had a lot of experience running bases, and when you go around the base and you look not just at the runway, but at the hangars and the utilities and the fuel and everything else that's there at the base that makes up the infrastructure, it has amazing strategic capability and capacity, but some of that stuff has to be kept up. There's an underground hydrant system underneath the parking ramp for fuel that when you used to have tankers here was used all the time. Now you don't have tankers here, but the fact that that underground fuel hydrant system is kept up, it's a small insurance premium that the Air Force pays every year, and we think they ought to keep paying it for an uncertain future. So it's, Mr. Schlossberg, while he's not a general, he pounds that harder than anyone I know on this particular topic, because he's seen the infrastructure improve over the three or plus decades that he's been involved here with the community, and he's more insistent that we, in our collective voice, when we engage with senior leaders, do all we can to solicit support for that continuing of the infrastructure, of the maintenance of the infrastructure. You're not going to let, you're not going to jump on that one?
Well, I. I've worked with this community, and I know many of you, since the very early 90s and the second base closure round, and the reason that I have harped on it is my time with the Base Closure Commission is the paradigm has been to value an installation not by the military forces that were there on the ground. I mean, over the years, there have been bombers here, there have been tankers here, there have been fighters here, there was missiles here, you know, there are UAS, ISR, but from a basing point of view, the paradigm had always been, what, the base is a vessel that the Defense Department can pour a mission into as it needs, so what is, what is the strength and capabilities of that vessel? And our runway, our fuel hydrants, the amazing facilities that we've had have managed each and every time, you know, to provide, you know, the backbone to our argument. So, I mean, I want to talk more when we get to some later slides, but the issue is, that has been the paradigm that has been used to evaluate bases.
And while we were on this visit, that's the purpose of the slide, is we highlighted exactly what Mr. Schlossberg was talking about to the Northern Command leadership, particularly those in the J-4, who, those staff members then sent a query to the Defense Logistics Agency saying, hey, as the combatant command here, why don't you tell us on what's the status of Grand Forks Air Force Base's fuel system? So they just asked the question, which then flows down through the Air Force to Air Combat Command, and then that question goes to Colonel Curry and his guys answer it, but it is highlighting to the Air Combat Command and the Air Force, General Van Hurk's interest in maintaining the infrastructure that's at this base, so it's one of the things we did there. Any questions on this slide, this visit? Like I said, we've got, we were there for a day and a half and had a lot of discussion. Not, there was, while there was a good discussions with Space Command, it was, it was really, the purpose of that visit was to kind of raise the awareness level of what was going on here, and a little bit they had were interested in the SDA, what was going on as well. Any other questions on the Colorado Springs visit? Yes, sir?
Sure, the infrastructure is central to our future. What are the current risks to the future health of that infrastructure?
The infrastructure at Grand Forks Air Force Base, every other Air Force Base, every other DOD installation is under tremendous amount of pressure. The DOD budget, as I think we all know, is top-line funded, you know, the top line is picked, and then it is allocated across the services, it is allocated within each service across the missions, procurement, R&amp;D, O&amp;M, et cetera. The money available to support installations has been declining, it has been declining repeatedly. The money available for military construction has been declining as a percentage of the Defense Department budget over the last several years. The competition for the DOD dollar is for new weapon systems. You've heard the, you know, the Air Force Chief of Staff talk about the need to retire legacy weapon systems in order to buy new weapon systems. They don't even argue we need more money for installation support, because that's not, not very competitive now. We need to stay on that, our delegation needs to stay on it, we need to be careful and conscious of, and support where we can. There's a latter part of our presentation, we're going to speak to that specifically, what the community contribution to that is.
I think that's a very good question, and George, I think, gave you a good answer as to what the current climate is, but what I would caveat that to say, the fact that we have new construction coming in next year and beyond for this unidentified mission is a good thing. But it is a pressure point that we collectively, all of us, need to keep, need to keep pushing on, because it's really limited funding right now, and as George said so articulately, the budgets are coming down, so.
You know, I was, we were, it was going to, but I think it's timely, let me just do that little piece that I was going to do now. The paradigm I, that I said previously, that the Air Force and the other services used for strategic basing had been, you know, the vessel, the infrastructure, what's on the base, what mission can be poured into that? That has not changed, but the way in which that infrastructure is derived now throughout the department, that has changed. We're at a new paradigm now, and that is, the day of the evaluation of what the federal budget could deliver at that installation is gone, and now it's a look at what is the total package? And when I say the total package, Grand Sky is a perfect example. I mean, grand, there has been a tremendous amount of infrastructure put on federal property to serve federal contracts that are not paid for by the federal taxpayer, indirectly, perhaps through procurement contracts, but we were just, some of us were just at the ribbon cutting for the multi-tenant building out at Grand Sky, and Tom Sawyer thanked his banker for the loans in order to build that infrastructure. The P4 that Todd and the city are doing with the wastewater treatment, the water lines and the other municipal services that are being brought to the base are all part of that evaluation. Most of the airmen, perhaps all of the airmen at Grand Forks Air Force Base that live on base, live in privatized housing. The Air Force did not pay for that and did not build it. It was privately financed, and it's being recouped through, you know, annual lease payments. That's the, you know, what the private sector and what the communities are doing to support the bases is a key, key ingredient in that now, and we're going to see more privatization, we're going to see, you know, power, excuse me, you know, electric generation is all privatized, or most of it is today. The bases are off their own water sewer, they're on the grid, they're on the community, and to the extent that the community supports that, to the community, to the extent the community fosters that, makes it easier, and to some degree subsidizes it, you know, is a degree to which the base has good infrastructure. So that's the change.
I think that as a community, we're committed to continuing to do that support. The, let me be kind of ridiculously oversimplistic here. You've got great infrastructure and strategic allocation, those are two things going for us. Here in the city, if we let our roads go to hell, it's really expensive to get them fixed again. Right now, you've got a really well-maintained runway, and keeping it maintained is going to be cheaper than letting it get run down, and that's, that's what I'm hearing, is that that's going to be continued, and that's incredibly important for our future here, isn't it?
And that's the, I'm sorry, so our bottom line, that whenever we get to the last slide, you'll see it, and we've used it almost in every presentation we've given, is that the base, Grand Forks Air Force Base, offers the nation strategic capacity and strategic flexibility for an uncertain future, okay? So that's the line, strategic capacity, strategic flexibility for an uncertain future. You know, we had no idea when after, you know, when, after Desert Storm ended, that we'd be in Southwest Asia for 30-plus years, in Iraq and then Afghanistan. You know, we don't know what the next 20 or 30 years is going to, is going to hold. The infrastructure that we have here, due to previous state, city, and county cooperation and investment, is really good infrastructure, but you're right, it's a, how do you maintain that infrastructure? And what we try to do when we talk with folks on the staffs and senior leaders, most, many of whom we know that used to work for us or whatever, we say, look, this is like, this is like, you know, telling your young child who's left home, you know, how important insurance is, you know, that, hey, this is a small premium you're going to pay, but it's, it could reap huge benefits for an uncertain future. And so when Mr. Schlossberg, you know, pounds the table at every meeting, you know, and brings up, rightly so, these examples, and does it in a way to say, hey, to gain support for that discretionary funding, albeit relatively small, you know, for Colonel Curry, to keep up some of this thing, that some of the stuff that he's not using right now, but absolutely we could leverage in the future, you know, we can help with that message, and we try very hard to help with that message, and we do it from different perspectives. These two gentlemen live in DC, God bless them, and we don't, but when we come together for visits, you know, we, we, we speak, this is one of our strategic themes, and, but there's some things we've heard even just on this trip. And, but there's some things we've heard, even just on this trip today, some unique things that, that you've already done some great partnerships, but there might be even future partnerships that don't rely solely on budget money coming out of the DOD top-line budget, but it's a, it's a new, a new way of approaching a problem, that, you know, or a way to make it better here for the airmen and their families, because you guys approach it differently than other communities.
One other thing I'd like to add, there are both new statutory authorities that are available now to the department in the last two or three years, and also, you know, transactions that we have conducted. I mean, you mentioned the runway specifically. I don't know how many people realize it, but Grand, the runway, the runway at Grand Forks Air Force Base is a joint-use runway, and it is in partnership with the county. The county has an agreement with the Air Force to use the Grand Forks Air Force Base runway for Grand Sky. That's why, you know, all the tenants at Grand Sky, you know, taxiway down the ramp that was recreated with state money and, and use that. And the income that comes back to Grand Sky, that, you know, under the Air Force lease, actually gets paid, a certain percentage of it, gets paid to Grand Forks Air Force Base. And under the statute, Grand Forks Air Force Base gets some of that money for use. So to the extent that this privatization activity and other privatization activities are successful, generate revenue, they provide additional resources to the base, which are available for those purposes. And one of the more recent statutes is the IGSA, Intergovernmental Support Agreement. That allows government-to-government sole-source agreements. The city, the county can make a contract arrangement with Grand Forks Air Force Base to share services. Things that they both need, can, they can have a single contract with a single purveyor, either the city can contract with the Air Force, or the county can contract with the Air Force, or the Air Force can contract with the city and county, so that the most efficient provider provides the services for both, so they get the economies of scale, and it reduces the cost, both to the city and the county, but hopefully to the base as well. So those are new authorities that, you know, that the Air Force and all of the services are using to, to change this paradigm. How do we get money into the bases, not necessarily out of the DOD Appropriations Act? So there are tools.
And George, correct me if I'm wrong, but we know as well that the, the revenue generated by Grand Sky that goes back to Grand Forks Air Force Base stays local, it stays with the base here, rather than going back into the DOD's mosh pit. Greg?
Well, under the, the 50% of the, of the money that comes in is mandated by statute must stay on the base, and my understanding that AFKEP has said that you can keep 100% of the money. I know you keep at least a few percent by law, but I think they've given you 1,400% of that money.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
This is another reason why success at Grand Sky is very important for the Grand Forks Air Force Base, for its future.
As, as long as all that stuff going on in Grand Sky doesn't affect with his number-one mission, military mission, and it's a, it's a, I mean, that's what you rely on a commander to, to make that, that the stuff that goes into Grand Sky is good, it's good for the, it's good for national defense, it's good for the country, but he's got a job to do, and his airmen have a job to do, whatever, the current, current mission and any future mission. But it's a balance that can clearly be worked. All right.
This last 30 minutes of discussion is a good segue into this chart, because I think all of you are familiar with Senator Hovind's recent theme of using Grand Forks and describing it as a hub-and-spoke concept. The reason I say that is, my colleagues have talked to you, using about 20, 22 bullets, in a level of detail that you all are interested in. But to senior US Air Force leaders, not to mention folks on Capitol Hill who aren't familiar with Grand Forks, this is a great way, in a short period of time, to get across the advantages and the benefits of Grand Forks, and to be able to do it in a fashion that hits home pretty hard. The current mission, the future ISR mission, the space mission, Customs and Border Protection, and unmanned aerial vehicles. I mean, these are all cutting-edge elements that Grand Forks is intimately involved in. So in a, in a very coherent and succinct way, this is a message that all of us can use when we're talking with folks who aren't familiar with the details that we all have been discussing in detail. The other point I want to highlight here, that is the grease that is essentially the basis that allows all of these things to operate and capitalize on, and one of the things that we just emphasized in great detail is a Grand Sky. So that's a very unique attribute that, once again, this approach allows us to use to make the case to those in Washington, and in the Department of Defense, to highlight the benefits of, of, of Grand Forks.
I built the slide, and I didn't think of this until General Deftula was just talking. And when he was talking about, at, at his level, where he, where he lives on, in his circles that he travels in, in Washington DC, yes, these are the key points. But when you think of those key points, you think of what, what's valuable about Grand Forks Air Force Base, I look at it, I go, US Air Force, current mission, future mission, Air Combat Command, US Air Force. US Space Force, so you've got two different services that are doing activities, are going to be doing activities once the SDA joins the Space Force, which will happen here eventually, right?
It's 23.
Okay. So you're going to have two different services that are going to have missions here. Then you've got a governmental agency called Customs and Border Protection that's been here for a good while, doing an important service for our country here out of Grand Forks Air Force Base. And you have the FAA, you're doing the incredible work with Grand Sky on this integration of unmanned and manned vehicles that's only going to get more intense, as in the commercial sector and the military sector. So you think of all those major entities that have equity in that base. That's a, that's a pretty cool thing.
It's impressive, and that's what's good about this concept.
Yeah.
Succinct, concise, and gets across a lot of information in a minimal number of words.
Okay, back to the lots-of-bullets slide. All right, so we've already talked about this first one, that, that's what we were going to do before.
Yeah.
These other things on the list are ones that, these are what we call additional strategic communication themes. So depending on whether we're going to go to the Pentagon, to the air staff, or with the other services like the Navy, or down to Langley Air Force Base to Air Combat Command Headquarters, we're going to make sure that people are aware of these kinds of things going on. These, some of these things have been announced just recently by the senators, the, the training that's going to happen here for current and future ISR missions. We've talked about the infrastructure, we beat that to death, and we will continue to do so. This strategic location still matters. It's a line that we're going to, I'm, I'm sorry, as long as we work for y'all, we're going to use that line, because I like it.
It's on point.
Yeah. And because, you know, because this community has, and it kind of goes with the last bullet, you have a reputation, since this base came into existence, for supporting every single and a very diverse set of missions that have come through that our nation has needed at different times in our history. Whether it was fighter defenses that came in first, or bombers, you know, the B-52 bombers, or the B-1 bombers, the tankers to support those bombers that would go project force, the ICBM, the nuclear mission, the Cavalier mission that's looking for detection, and ISR, all of that, you, you guys have supported, this community's supported every single mission that's come through, and you have an uncertainty as to what, that new missions may be coming, but you're ready to support them. That's the, that's, that's the theme. Next to last bullet there, on unparalleled community support, you know, the, the Department of Defense did a, or the Air Force, rather, I'm sorry, did a review, a strategic basing review of communities, what was the title of it, it was exactly, US Air Force Strategic Basing Metrics. And they basically color-coded, you know, green, yellow, red, on a variety of categories, and Grand Forks Air Force Base and the community got an overall green, the top third of, of all Air Force bases, very happy to be in the, in the, in the green part. But there were some of the sub-elements of that briefing, or that, of that report, that did not totally capture a lot of the changes that you guys have been making as a state and as a county and a city, that you guys have been working on just this past year. I mean, you're continuing to do really good stuff to support airmen and their families, and we want to help tell that, that message, and be the-
Bill, could I?
Absolutely.
We have one point here.
The Air Force alone was the service that created, that tried to rack and stack all of their installations. And happily, Grand Forks Air Force Base, as Bill said, you know, we're in the top third. The reason the Air Force did it, however, is, among, they were leading the other services, the Navy and the Army did not step out to do this, is Congress demanded that in the future, strategic basing on new systems and current systems, community support would be evaluated. It had not been before. It was part of the change in paradigm that I was suggesting. So not only is the old-line infrastructure there, but the part of the paradigm which the Congress said is that all future basing decisions will need to be done evaluating the community support for the soldiers, sailors, and airmen on those bases, the ability of the community to absorb, educate, house, recreate the people that are there. So among those metrics were schools, houses, and, and all of the other things there. We did come out well, we did not come out perfect, and there were areas that, if you look at those charts, you know, we can improve, and hopefully, you know, working with the legislature, the community, the city, the county, we can improve upon those. I don't think this racking and stacking will survive, however, just my personal opinion. The Air Force is taking a tremendous amount of heat, there have been hearings in the Congress, because it, I'm sure it's very clear, if we're in the top third, some communities are in the bottom third, and they have senators too. And, and so, so I think there's going to be a racking and stacking system, I think it's going to be very different, I think it's going to come from OSD, the Secretary of Defense, it's going to be uniform across the services, and it may not be what the Air Force wants, it may not be what the Navy or the Army wants, and it may be a, a different system, but we're likely to see a future system that the Congress is going to hold the department in. So that's what I, that's what, that's what's important about that listing.
We beat the last bullet there, about your reputation as warriors of the North, we beat that to death, but it's, it is still an important theme that we're going to continue to, to make sure everyone that we ever talk to knows what your reputation is here. The last, the banner across the bottom, we're, we're ex-airmen, ex-airmen, we used to wear a uniform, but you still does a lot of support for the Air Force and Air Power, but anytime that any of us have been in any conflict or any sort of activity, we always do it as a joint force, as part of a team, and usually with, combined with other nations, all working together as a team. So teamwork is incredibly important to us, we don't do anything without it, and it's been quite a blessing to be at this, this forum right here, with members of the city and the county, you know, working together, because when we, even though we, we may work for different entities here, when we go and engage with NORTHCOM, or SPACECOM, or the Pentagon, we're going to be speaking for the greater Grand Forks community. And that, and that is not just the city and the county, the University of North Dakota, President Armikos, we sat with him and his key, the key deans of the colleges, that, and we have a great meeting today, that we have some follow-up items that we have to work on. Colonel Curry, even though he's only been in command a few months, has been incredible, reaching out to, to us old guys, and helping explain his vision for the base, and how, and really come saying, hey, you can help us, help me be a better commander by doing these things. And we'll, and we, we, we look forward to working with Colonel Curry, you know, so that we, when we go out there and we, we set up these meetings, we're doing it on behalf of the city, the county, the base, Grand Sky, the industry that's here, but that, I should have had more things there after city, county, and state, I realize that one, now when I built the slide. But it is, it's clearly a team approach, and we as the combined consultants here want to contribute to that, be part of that team, but also contribute to the whole team. So, happy to do that. And that's, that's, makes us happy.
So what do we need to do in the upcoming year to take that strategic message out and continue to do all that we can do collectively to enhance the value of Grand Forks Air Force Base? Again, having some key and essential periodic meetings with some of the leadership of the various entities, I think, is an important way to get that message out. You know, for the last year and a half, we've been doing a lot of, as I call it Hollywood Squares, through Zoom and the like. People are starting to take face-to-face meetings again, thankfully, and they're so much more productive than the Zoom. Zoom's been a good filler under the circumstances, but there is so much more to be gained by personal interaction in significant meetings like this. So one thing we think we need to do first is get into Washington DC and see the senior leadership at the Pentagon. We do know the chief and the vice chief, the vice chief was just out here for the Air Force Ball, he's a Grand Forks alum, and it would be nice to sit down with him in his office in the Pentagon at some point in time in the near future, and kind of go over some of these strategic messages that probably were hit when he visited, but can be reemphasized by us old guys and whoever we bring from the community to go with us on these. About three or four years ago, we talked to the Navy staff, they do have Tritons, which are Global Hawk equivalents to some extent, they didn't know where Grand Forks was. We talked to two two-stars, one of them was the navigator of the Navy, and that's what his business card said. And I think we filled them in. Those people have transferred out now, and there may be some, with the Arctic Strategy gaining the traction that it's doing, the Navy's kind of been leading the way to some extent on the Arctic Strategy. So getting up there and at least familiarizing them once, once again with the capability and the, and the opportunity at Grand Forks Air Force Base is probably a key thing. Randy Church Key is a friend of ours, and he was in charge of the Arctic Domain Awareness Center up in Anchorage. We did hook him up previously with UND about a year and a half ago, because he had a consortium of universities that were all plugged into the Arctic Defense Domain Awareness Center up there. We got him hooked up with Dr. Armikos. He has changed jobs, even to a more significant one now. He has been named just recently as the DOD advisor for the Arctic, so he's going to be advising all the senior leaders in OSD, and, and likewise, on ar, issues of, of the Arctic. I think he's a friend in court, I think we need to see him again, and, and review with him what Grand Forks Air Force Base has to offer. There's other officials that are up there that, you know, Department of Homeland Security, FAA, and the like, all play back into some of the things we've already previously talked about. There's some other agencies, but in terms of, this is all developing, but in terms of repurposing the Block 30s, we need to explore that and find out what agencies or entities may be interested in, you know, kind of strapping that on, or at least exploring that option. So that would be something we would do on a trip into DC. I think that needs to happen, myself, I, personally, I think that needs to happen before the end of the year. Time is of the essence to some extent on some of these issues. I don't know if we can pull it off by the end of the year, these guys' schedules become very tough, so if we don't set a date real soon and give it a try, it may be more difficult, and we may have to wait till after the year, after the, end of the new year. Langley Air Force Base, General Kelly was just out here. Beef had a chance to have a real good interaction with him, some of you all got the chance to go to dinner with him and talk about Grand Forks Air Force Base, but I will tell you that his staff, the senior leaders on his staff, have basically all changed out since the last time we were there. Again, not many of them are that familiar with what's going on up here at the base and in the community. So we need to get there sometime, hopefully in the early part of 2022. 16th, we just, the conversation we had with UND reinforced the next bullet on here in terms of research and development, and, and some of the things they're doing in pilot training, that we need to brief to the folks at Randolph Air Force Base at AETC, because there is some cooperation and some, some stuff that's going on at UND that they would be of interest with, with, we think. 16th Air Force is Beef's immediate boss. We did a trip down there two years ago in the summer, I thought it was beneficial. His, his leadership's all changed out, so a trip down there would probably be worthwhile as well. And then, probably the Space Force and SDA leadership, that's probably a, a meeting that could be wrapped up in the DC realm, I think that, that, and getting- that could be wrapped up into DC realm. I think that, and getting a chance to talk to Derek Tornier, who's kind of leading SDA right now and has been up here before, is probably a good idea. We always want to stay in contact with the Codells and the, and the staff because as I said, they're key and essential, obviously, and big, big supporters of, of all that's happened and all that will continue to happen. So, but we're ready, willing, and able to continue to tout all the great benefits of Grand Forks Air Force Base. I will tell you, the four of us are passionate about it. I mean, this place has, has worn away and a, a, a big place in our hearts. And we think, we're not just passionate about it because of that. We're passionate about it because there's so much advantage that needs to be taken up for our national security here at this base, especially with the threat picture as it continues to grow from China and Russia. And we kind of get out of the Middle East and focus on those peer competitors that are out there and have the strategic capacity to challenge us in real time. So Grand Forks Air Force Base can play back into that in a big, big way that it isn't quite doing all of that yet. There's more opportunity to help in that regard. So.
Can't end without, without Mr. Jim Bradshaw, who has accompanied us on just about every trip that we went on. I know Jim's not here today, but that blue line was the one that, he always had the last word at these meetings. And that's the one that he, he not only said, but I think this community demonstrates. When you think back and in particular, when you hear Mr. Schlossberg, who works with other
I'm sorry. Thank you. God, I was doing so good too. That there are other bases and other communities don't approach problems the same way you guys do. It's just really that simple. Whether it's because you guys are relatively isolated, you just have good people up here, you just, you cooperate better. I don't know what it is in the water. But other communities don't have this type of relationship. And it's a, and it's a growing relationship and it's important. But this, bringing solutions, when we go on these visits and, and all of us here, the retired generals have been on the other end where a community team has come into our office or into our conference room and it's like, oh God, I'm going to hear a half hour of
Here comes the complaints.
I'm going to hear a half hour of whining. And it doesn't happen with the Grand Forks team. It's not a half hour, 45 minutes of whining. It's, hey, this is what we think your problem is or a challenge is. Here's an area where we may be able to help. And everybody that we, that has that approach, it's finds it very refreshing, but it finds it really how a, a community and a base team ought to work. And that's what, that's why Jim always has that last word and it's not just words. It's demonstrates what, who you all are. We're happy to be part of it. So what other questions do you have on either? That's it? No more slides? I know he's, this guy's really thankful, right? Hey, it's, nevermind, I won't go say it.
I've been quiet for you.
All right. What other, what other questions you got on any, any topic that any of us can, what, what we've done or going to do or, yes, sir?
You want a conversation? I'm happy to ask some questions. So the last slide, steps for, for 2022 moving forward. I've heard about NORTHCOM. I've heard about our strategic importance. We have great infrastructure, great strategic importance. The Arctic mission is mentioned a couple of times. A Chinese-Russian threat, probably not going to come by sea. They're going to come over the top. So our strategic importance, incredibly important. But there's a tendency to see the Canadian border as kind of the end of the world and there's dragons there and we don't pay attention to it. We're, we're talking to people in DC, in San Antonio, Alaska. When are we talking to people in Canada?
Well, you know, we did, one of our first, the first year that we were together as a team, we, we did that. It was pretty early on in our, in the process. That was 2015 that we met with the, there
I remember that.
In DC.
Right.
But I, I think General Dapto, I mean, you, you live in DC and
Yeah, well, one of the things I would bring up is the subject was brought up with General Van Hurk, who is also Commander NORAD, I'm sorry, NORAD, which involves. And so we talked to, I think, a Canadian three-star who was there at the same time we were down there. So when it comes to looking at options, and we brought some of those to him in the context of the threat, the relationship between Canada and the United States is such that it's very much integrated and we don't, there aren't dragons over there. They're, they're viewed as partners and they're very open to some of these new ideas that we've been talking about. For example, using remotely piloted aircraft as forward sensors, if you will, building an airborne dew line to be able to detect these cruise missiles that are, that are coming into, into being. So these are some of the new concepts that are being addressed and the Canadians are part of that discussion set.
So as city, city and county, solutions, not problems, can we be doing anything? Can we be inviting PMs down? Can we be inviting whoever it is? Should we be having liaison conversations? Is there a role for city and county to play in that?
I think there always is. And I think, I think you guys are doing it, but I think you need to continue to do it. And that's when we do get leadership from the Air Force, from Canada, wherever. Be engaged, be involved, be a part of that visit as General Curry invites you, or soon to be General Curry. I just promoted him. Invite you to come out to the base and support those visits. I think you're doing a lot that you can do to get that strategic message out when you go on these trips with us as well. It's, you know, sometimes it's just the generals that go, but it's, there's that punch at the end when we get the, the civilian leadership there that Bill was talking about that's key and essential. I was going to comment on the, the Canadian visit too. I remember that visit. That we went over to the embassy in DC. It was, I was on a DC trip and we went to the embassy and talked to their air attache or whatever their equivalent name is for it. He was very polite and somewhat interested in our briefing because we were talking about how we can cooperate with them and possibly do something at Grand Forks Air Force Base together. And at the end of the briefing, he kind of looked at us and he said, hey, we got bigger problems than you do with trying to make sure that our bases have a mission at it. So I don't know that we want to come to Grand Forks Air Force Base and do a mission when we're fighting the same kind of issues in Canada. But again, there's cooperation that pops up all the time and we need to be cognizant of it.
So General Dapto, just a couple of weeks ago, sent us all, or it may have come from Bruce. I don't know who sent it. I think it was you, about an MQ-9, the same MQ-9s that fly around with Customs and Border Protection. Only this particular model has a little bit longer wingspan to carry more fuel. Took off out of Grand Sky or Grand Forks, operated out of Grand Sky and flew north. And one of the problems of the, of the unmanned systems that we have right now is how far north can they go? Because they're controlled by satellites and there's a limit to how far north, you know, that we want to domain awareness on and how far can they go? This particular MQ-9 was modified by General Atomics with a different rate, satellite communication dish and a different band, and it flew really far north. Okay? And the article, the open press article was north of 78 degrees latitude, which is pretty doggone far north. And it hung around up there for a while and then came back. And it, it was only airborne for 24, 25 hours on that mission. And that plane can stay airborne for over 40 hours. So, and to do that mission, it had to coordinate not only with our own FAA, but with the Canadians counterpart to the, to the FAA. I think, this is just personal opinion, the interest in the Arctic and our combined North American interest in the Arctic for domain awareness, for energy, for threat access, whatever, is only going to ever increase during our lifetimes. And so, you know, perhaps on our next visit to DC, we need to maybe reengage the Canadians again and just for awareness, but hey, what, is there anything we can, as we look to the future? Is there any, are there any possible things that the community can do better hosting a team down here to visit something? I don't know.
Yeah, let me just jump in here with a pragmatic view. The Canadians will go along with whatever concept of operations we come up with. So I'll be candid with you. I think that we'd be wise to pursue some of these concepts of operation and develop them further before we invite the Canadians down here, just simply because they're, they're going to, they're going to accept them.
Sir, if I can just add one piece to, we, we do have a detachment up there in Canada that we support from Grand Forks Air Force Base, primarily from a communications squadron standpoint. And that relationship's really strong. We've done a bunch of virtual stuff. We had a couple of airmen come down from Canada because it's easier for them to get in, into our base overall. So at the grassroots level, just remember, if, if we think there's a relationship to be had close by proximity-wise, we probably already have it. And then what can we do from a community standpoint when they're coming this way to go? How do we welcome those teams to the city? That's something I think we can look into and from a city and county perspective.
Actually, independent of these discussions, there's value for our city and county to know our counterparts up in Winnipeg, other communities up there, Brandon, et cetera. And the more relationships we have, the easier it is to deal with things as the opportunities come along. So just looking for solutions, not problems.
Well, I agree with what General Dapto said on the militarily, as far as how the Canadians and the US have always been together. There's, I don't know the answer to this. Maybe Dave knows. But the, what you all are going to be doing here in the state from Grand Sky and Vantas and the beyond visual line of sight, integration of manned and unmanned vehicles. As that program develops, that experiment or that, that, that thing, that's going to get, I think, if you pull that off in the state using radars that already exist and communication towers, but doing it in a different way, I think that's going to get interest not only in our country, but probably Canada as well. And I have no idea what Canada's take is on the integration of UAVs manned and unmanned. Do you have any, any ideas on that? I know Jim Pos probably would.
It's a big sky theory.
Okay.
Maybe we can continue over a drink.
All right, Dave. I got it.
But they got a lot of airspace up there and it's not really an issue.
Thanks. Thanks for the conversation. All right. Anything further for to this evening? Otherwise, I'd open up for some closing words or if you wanted any further questions, Madam Chair, please.
I do have just a couple of comments to make. I've been a, I've lived in this community in my entire life. And I think that Canada's always been supportive. If you remember 20 odd years ago when 911 happened, every plane that was heading for this country to land, Canada took them all and put them in every airport from large airports to airports that had less than 9,000 people in them. So that, you know, communities that were very small that took on lots of people from all over the world. So I think that they're willing to do what it takes to help out the United States. No questions asked at that point, which was a very, I thought, very, you know, very admirable for them to take that on. If any of you remember Mary Jo Scheid, who used to be huge in supporting the Air Force Base here in Grand Forks, she always talked in her speeches about Grand Forks County and the state of North Dakota being landlocked. We don't have a lot of water, just, you know, sloughs and a few lakes here and there. In the state of North Dakota, as of probably the early, in the 2000s, there are more four-star admirals from North Dakota than any other state in the Union in the US Navy. And she used to tell people that a lot, particularly when she went out east. Because when she went out east, there are lots of people on the East Coast that were from states that bordered the ocean. And they kind of like, well, that can't be true. And I think they checked it out a lot because we had a lot of individuals that did go into the Navy back when they, they were being not forced, but highly encouraged to join up. So I think those are things to remember. I have known Jim Bradshaw since, since I was a child. He married our neighbor. And he's, he's always been a thinker outside the box. He's been very famous for what he's done with his organization. And I think that all of us, we figure it out. We don't turn to other communities, the flood of 1997 and other floods that we had. We didn't look for help to come in. We figured it out. And maybe because we are up in north, east North Dakota, we deal with storms, we deal with floods, we deal with whatever comes along and we use, we think outside the box, literally. And so I give all of us credit for that because we have taken lemons and made lemonade out of them. When the 1950s, when the Grand Forks Air Force Base came, one of my neighbors, that's how he came here. He got off the train in Grand Forks and he said, where is the Grand Forks Air Force Base? People in Grand Forks didn't have a clue what he was talking about when he first came here. When I was a kid, growing up outside of Grand Forks, one of the missile sites was real close to our home. And we never had to worry about, when I was traveling with my mom and we were driving around and our vehicle would break down, you didn't have a cell phone to call for help. We knew there were little blue trucks all over the place because they were out checking out the missile sites. And there was always a little blue truck that was going to stop and see if we needed help. They were, they were our neighbors. They were the best ones on the road. And they weren't bad people. They were great people. And they were our AAA back in the 60s and 70s when I was growing up. And it was, it was neighbors. They weren't, you know, just those base people. They were neighbors. They married my friends. They married my relatives. They became people that left for a while and went to other places of the world, but came back here to retire. And that was cool. That was very cool. So we do have to think outside the box because we don't have everything we, we need. But with the University of North Dakota, with all the different colleges that we have accessible to us, we do really well with what we do.
Well, Colonel Curry, you got to beat that now. You have any, any closing remarks, sir?
You're going to make me fall.
Yeah, because I'm not falling.
Well, thanks again, Mr. Mayor, for, for letting me be here, spend a little time with everybody and hear from the four experts over there. Hopefully you guys are just as excited as I am, being in the position with the team that we have. This community is unique. You hear it all the time, but I'll say it again. It absolutely is unique. The partnerships, the teamwork that you have, is it perfect? No, it's not perfect. But I could tell you, the fact that you're willing to meet like this, pull a seat up to the table, pretty much any day of the week speaks volumes, not only to the people in this room, but to my airmen on the base. They feel welcome. They feel valued. They know there's purpose here and they know there's a future here for them. Whether it's serving active duty or whether it's sticking around after the fact. Because we have plenty of people that have done that too. But I really want to say thanks for your time this evening and thanks for your, your presentation. That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Colonel Curry. We all appreciate the teamwork and I think the team's just getting stronger and stronger. And that, that's very exciting. I, I think the, the one overarching message, I think the community would like the consultants to send back, and I know you'll do it every time, but I'm just going to say it again because we're on, we're on TV here, that the Grand Forks Air Force Base is not just an economic driver to this community. And it's, you know, that's a piece of it, obviously it is, but it's, that's not just, that's not all it is to us. At the risk of plagiarizing JFK, I think this community has always looked not nearly as much at what the base does for us, but what can the community do for the base and for the defense of this country? And I just think that's the most heartwarming and exciting part. And we always talk about Jim Bradshaw. It's been brought up a couple of times. So I think we'll have to end on a, on a Jim Bradshaw quote. And whether we're sitting with the Vice Chief CQ Brown or the Chief CQ Brown or the Vice Chief Alvin or ACC Commander General Kelly, Jim Bradshaw always ends with this. He says, "Grand Forks just wants to stay in the fight." And I think the good news is, looking at the future, we are in the fight and we're going to be in the fight for the next 50 years. So with that, God bless everyone here. God bless our airmen and the military. Without them, we've got nothing. And this is a country, this is a part of the country that's very patriotic. And I pound on that all the time because I've seen, I've seen other parts of the country. I've seen other parts of the world. And the patriotism that we have in this country, in this state, is strong. And that's what's going to bond us and hold us together long into the future. So.